Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is March 3rd, 2022. Clerk, if you call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Here.
Counselor Genetino.
Here.
Counselor Cuddy.
Here.
Counselor Wacaster.
Here.
Mayor Quill.
Here. Would you please join us in the pledge of allegiance?
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If you remain standing for a moment aside for prayer reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Public announcements, please.
Thanks, Mayor. We do have a couple of announcements this evening. First is a couple of upcoming public meetings. Next week, the Historic Resources Review Board meeting for the month of March will be held on Tuesday, March 8th, 2022 at 7:00 p.m. That meeting will be held here in council chambers at Memorial City Hall, 24 South Street. And then, on the following Monday, March 14th, will be the monthly meeting for the month of March for the Auburn Civil Service Commission. That meeting will be March 14th, 6:30 p.m., to be held on the third floor training room here at City Hall, 24 South Street. Also, want to let the public know that Mayor and Council are in communication with the pastor from the St. Peter and Paul Church to have a ceremony on Sunday, March 13th, at 12:00 p.m. noon for the community to gather in support of Ukraine. And more details will come out about that probably next week as we get closer to the Sunday, the 13th.
National Republic.
Yeah, it'll be out front on the front steps of City Hall.
What's up?
Thanks, Mayor.
There were proclamations in the history month.
Proclamation tonight from the Office of Mayor Quill for Women's History Month, whereas American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. Whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social roles in every sphere of life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside of the home. And whereas, American women have played a unique role throughout the history of the nation by providing the majority of the volunteer labor force of our nation. And whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable philanthropic and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitionist movement, the emancipation movement, and the industrial labor movement, and the civil rights movement, creating a more fair and just society for all. And whereas, here in Auburn, our New York State Equal Rights Heritage Center has as its mission to promote the legacy of the many women that have provided critical leadership in our states and our nation's history, women such as Harriet Tubman, Frances Seward, Martha Coffin-Rite, Eliza Wright, Osborne, Susan B. Anthony, and Elizabeth Cady Stanton, just to name a few. Now therefore, be it resolved that Michael D. Quill, Mayor of the City of Auburn, on behalf of the members of the City Council and the community of Auburn, hereby proclaim March 2022 designated as Women's History Month in the City of Auburn.
Thank you. Counsel, with your permission, I'd like to give this proclamation to our own city councilor. Counselor Kent. Please, if you will share.
People are under half hour.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We're so fortunate to live in this community and recognize so many of the names that Mr. Mason just read out. And I'm not going to repeat anything that we just read here, but I am going to say a couple of things. I just want to mention that the reason we have Women's History Month is because we weren't recording what women were already doing a lot of the time. So I just have a challenge for women, not just women, but families, to make sure that you are recording today's stories for the next generation's history and generations to come. So whether you keep a journal, whether you tell stories to your children, oral histories, interview the elderly folks in your family that are still with us. Don't just use social media. All our stories are important, including women. And this is how we're going to make sure that we remember what's going on now in the future. Thank you very much again.
Thank you. Public to be heard.
At this point in time, we will open the public to be heard. A portion of the council meeting, residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks to three minutes or less, and please observe commonly accepted rules of courtesy and decor.
At this time, is there anyone desiring to be heard? Mr. Lubner? Please, either podium, whichever one. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Leroy Lubner. I live at 106 Francis Street. I'm here to talk to you about the New Guinea Negro Settlement for a few minutes. I've lived on Osborne Street from 1975 until, like, when I got married in 1982. My parents lived there to my father's death in 2014. Always been a very, very big history fan, especially in Auburn, that neighborhood specifically. That's been occupied continually for almost 220 years at least. Probably the oldest neighborhood in Auburn. And the basis of it was the New Guinea Negro Settlement. A piece of land that Harry and Kate Freeman, John Hardenberg's indentured servants, created a settlement for other escaped slaves and free blacks to live apart from the rest of the city, but as free people. They were integral part of... Per... Excuse me. They provided the labor for most of the projects that we take for granted here in Auburn. They created, the people they lived with them created the Genesee Turnpike. Worked in the quarries, quarried the stone for the buildings. Later on, their son, Morgan, the original Morgan Freeman, was, worked closely with Harriet Tubman. And New Guinea was used as a major terminal, not a stop on the underground railroad where people would stop and continue on their way to freedom, but a terminal where they came and determined if they wanted to continue on to Canada or if they were to stay and live as free people. It's been built upon and built upon over the years, but there's a part of it that I often thought would make a beautiful park. And that's where the old gas station and where the Lisette Street Bridge ramp, on-ramp, used to be right across from the Onderman. So, much to my dismay, I saw that the Jack Voorhees for Tools was going to tear it all apart and make a parking lot out of it. Auburn's history is hometown. There's a book that's been put out, God's Freeman, written by Ted Freeman, a descendant of the Freemans. It explains an awful lot about the mechanics of how Auburn was created. There should be a tribute, a memorial somewhere in town for these people. I would think, just because of where it sits, it's on the land, although it's been built up so it's not on the ground layer where New Guinea was. It has a panoramic view of the river and the mill pond. Part of the land lot is actually, under the dirt, is a brick-paved and limestone-curved 1870 street that ran from Osborne to where the bridge was. It'd be beautiful. It'd be gorgeous. And right now, you're coming up on the end of your fiscal year for your HOD CDBG money. So I would ask you that we consider looking into reprogramming funds that haven't been spent and purchase this, just to preserve it for now.
Mr. Lubner, this is very interesting, but I have to cut you off for our rules. You're welcome to come back again next week or whatever, but it was very interesting.
No, it's fine. Just consider it. That's all.
Very good. Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to be heard? Very well, I'll close it. I shall public be heard. Approval of meeting minutes. February 10th, 2022. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, second by Counselor Castro. Discussion, correction, deletion. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Wacaster.
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.
Aye. Minutes from February 17th of this year. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genetino, second by Counselor Cuddy. Your Kent, excuse me. Discussion, corrections, deletions. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Wacaster.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye. Clerk advises the remainder of minutes will be available next week. Mr. Diger, City Manager's Report, please.
Mayor, I assure you, staff and myself, we're hard at work this week, and I do not have a report available for you tonight. I apologize.
So the dog eats your homework.
Something like that. Yes.
Very well. We'll catch up next week. Report from members of council, councillors? Local law number one of 2022, enacting the adoption of Section 458 B of the real property tax, providing for Cold War veterans exemption from real property taxes and elimination of the 10-year limit. Second reading or is this up for a vote?
This is a second reading and the vote tonight.
Very, very good. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Genetino, second by Counselor Cuddy.
Local law number one, this was originally read the first time, the last meeting of the month of January. And the public hearing was on this back in February 17th. And it's before the council tonight for the final decision, final consideration anyways. Local law number one of 2022, whereas the state of New York has enacted legislation, Section 458A of the Real Property Tax Law, authorizing an exemption from real property taxes for real property owned by persons who rendered military service to the United States during declared periods of wartime. And whereas, the state of New York has enacted legislation, Section 458B of the Real Property Tax Law, authorizing an exemption from real property taxes for real property owned by person who rendered military service to the United States during the Cold War, defined as September 2nd, 1945 to December 26th, 1991, provided such property meets the requirements set forth in law. Whereas, on March 28th, 1991, the City of Auburn adopted local law number two of 1991, enacting the adoption of the veteran's exemption pursuant to Real Property Tax Law, Section 458A, which allowed for veterans of certain defined theaters of war to apply for a property tax exemption. And whereas, on January 3rd, 2013, the City of Auburn adopted local law number two of 2013, enacting the adoption of the Cold War exemption pursuant to Real Property Tax Law, Section 458B, which expanded the class of individuals able to seek an exemption. And at that time, the exemption carried a 10-year term limit. And whereas, New York State Real Property Tax Law, Section 458B, has since then been amended to allow a local option to eliminate the 10-year term limit. And whereas, New York State Real Property Tax Law, Section 458A and 458B, have since then been amended to expand the application of the exemptions to apply to LGBTQ+ veterans who were less than honorably discharged based on their status. And whereas, it would be beneficial if the City of Auburn were to opt to eliminate this 10-year limit and expand the class of veterans eligible for the exemption. And whereas, local law number one of 2022, attached here to and incorporated herein, proposes to update Chapter 265 of the City Code to achieve such goals. And whereas, the passage of local law number one of 2022 is categorized as a Type II action pursuant to the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act and the New York State Code, Rules, and Regulations Sections 617.5(c)(16), and therefore pursuant to NYCRR, Section 617.3F, a determiner under seeker is not required. Whereas, subject to council approval, a public hearing was held on February 17th, 2022, concerning the repeal of the local law of number two of 1991. Now therefore, be it enacted, that the Auburn City Council does hereby repeal the following sections of local law number two of 1991, which is originally passed as Chapter 182 of the City Code entitled Veterans Exemption. One, Article III, Section 26524. Be it further enacted, the Auburn City Council does hereby adopt local law number one of 2022, attached and incorporated herein, which replaces the following articles and sections of Chapter 265 of the Auburn City Code entitled Veterans Exemption. One, Article III, Section 26524A, and two, Article III, Section 26524B. Be it further enacted, the foregoing repeal and adoption shall take effect immediately upon the filing of a certified copy of the local law with the New York Secretary of State. That's on there.
Very good. Thank you. And that will be for two weeks?
Yep, no, right now.
Right now?
Okay.
So... Don't see it here under regulation or whatever. So we need a sponsor? Do we have a sponsor?
Yep.
Do we have a second?
All set.
Discussion, councillors? Please, counsel.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Wacaster.
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Thank you. Grant Acceptance Resolution Number 25 of 2022, authorizing the acceptance of a grant from New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation Environmental Protection Fund for the Casey Park Skate Park. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, second by Counselor Genetino.
Grant Acceptance Resolution 25 of 2022, whereas the City of Auburn owns and operates Casey Park, which provides quality recreational opportunities to persons of all ages. And whereas, Casey Park includes a 6,500-square-foot skate park built in 2001, which now requires replacement and updating. And whereas, the construction of a new concrete skate park aligns with the goals in the 2016 Parks Master Plan, the 2020-24 CDBG Consolidated Plan, and the 2021-22 Annual Action Plan. And whereas, the Casey Park Skate Park construction is anticipated to cost $500,000, of which half will be paid with grant funding and the balance with a local match from CDBG. And whereas, on July 15th, 2021, the City of Auburn applied for financial assistance from the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation under the Environmental Protection Fund for the purpose of funding $250,000 for construction of the Casey Park Skate Park. And whereas, in December 2021, New York State Office of Parks awarded the city grant funding for the skate park in the full amount of $250,000. And whereas, the City of Auburn must be authorized and directed to accept the grant funding and execute all necessary documents in connection therewith prior to commencing the project. Now therefore, be it resolved by the council that, when on July 15th, 2021, the City of Auburn applied for the financial assistance from the New York State Office of Parks under the EPF for the purpose of funding $250,000 for the construction of the Casey Park Skate Park. Two, the mayor is, on behalf of the City of Auburn, is hereby authorized and directed to accept these grant funds in an amount not to exceed $250,000 for construction of the new Casey Park Skate Park. Three, the mayor, on behalf of the city, is authorized and directed to agree to the terms and conditions of the master contract and any amendments thereto, any required deed of easement, and any other certifications with the Office of Parks. And four, the mayor, on behalf of the City of Auburn, is authorized and directed to agree to the terms and conditions of any required deed of easement granted to the Office of Parks and Recreation that affects title to real property owned by the City of Auburn and approved by the grant funds, which may be a duly-recorded public access covenant, conservation easement and/or preservation easement. And be it further resolved, that the controller is authorized to create a project account with a total expense budget of $500,000 and to recognize the grant revenue from the New York State Office of Parks in the amount of $250,000.
Mr. Diger, yourself, first, do you have anything?
I believe we've got Tiffany Beebe here, who was been working on this project. If anybody's got any specific questions about it.
Counselor?
Last question, more of a gratitude. My, I served on the Skate Park Committee from the beginning, and I just want to thank the planning department, specifically Tiffany Beebe and Renee Jensen for coordinating the meetings with the committees. There was a lot of input, and the big culmination happened across the street at the EHRC and was very well attended. And this grant really came as a surprise. I remember when we were applying for it and, you know, getting all of the support from the community and letters. And it was a success. So thank you all for working on this. And it's been a real pleasure to serve on that committee. So this is, I'll be very excited to accept this grant and see this skate park happen within the year. So thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to piggyback on Counselor Cuddy's comments, thank the planning staff. I'd also like to thank Counselor Cuddy. He's really spearheaded this from this body. You know, it's one thing to talk about doing things, it's another thing to do things. And this was something that constituents had approached him on, and he's really taken it on, so I want to thank him for that. He mentioned the meeting across the street. I actually attended that meeting, and it was interesting, and I think it goes to show what an important investment this is going to be, because there were people from as far away as Rochester who came to give input into the park, because what they do is they travel all around to visit these skate parks. So not only is it a quality of life improvement for the people of Auburn, it's actually a tourist attraction. And it is really piggybacking on the several million dollars of investment that this city has made into the Casey Park complex from the ice skating rink to the pool, pickleball tennis courts, Falcon Park, the playground. So I'm proud of it. It's in line with our Parks Master Plan, and I'm excited. I'm not going to try it. But I'll go down and watch.
But I just, to add on to what Counselor Genetino said, I posted the meeting when it happened, and I have a friend that's out in Minnesota. And like, his comment was, you guys got a grindline skate park? So it's like, these are like coveted skate parks across the country. So we really lucked out. So thank you very much. And on behalf of the committee and everyone on the committee.
Yes, absolutely. We look forward to having a public meeting, tentatively planned for this month, where we will release the conceptual design.
Great. Looking forward to it. Thank you.
Anything else, counsel? Tiffany Beebe, for the ribbon cutting. We'll all put helmets on. I can see two or three people here who would put skates on, but some of us have to call 911. Don't be bound there, but thank you. Nice shot. Generally, thank you as always. No further discussion. Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Wacaster.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Land Sale Resolution Number 26 of 2022, authorizing the sale of real property known as 180 State Street. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Kent, second by Counselor Castro.
Land Sale Resolution 26 of 2022, whereas on June 4th, 2019, the City of Auburn acquired title to real property, commonly known as 180 State Street, by tax foreclosure. And whereas, property is approximately .32 acres and consists of a parking lot. And whereas, the adjacent property owner, Jeffrey Ford, has proposed a purchase offer and sale contract, which is attached here to and incorporated herein, for the purchase of the property at a price of $5,000. And whereas, Mr. Ford intends to use approximately 25% of the lot for off-street parking for use by his tenants in the adjacent property and change the remaining 75% of the lot into a green space and garden. And whereas, the property is a surplus parcel and not needed for city purposes. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the City of Auburn does hereby approve the purchase offer and sale contract from Mr. Jeffrey Ford, which is incorporated herein for the sale of 180 State Street for the sum of $5,000, subject to the terms and conditions set forth therein. And be it further resolved, that the mayor is authorized to sign the purchase offer and sale contract together with any and all documents in order to finalize the closing of the sale.
Mr. Diger, anything to add?
No, Mayor, councillors, this particular property, as the resolution states, the city acquired back in 2019. Since that time, when the city first acquired the property, this particular landowner has been in communication frequently with staff with an interest in purchasing the property and creating some green space for the home that he owns on the corner. Look at this lot, essentially surrounds between the street that's there and this lot. The building is totally surrounded with asphalt, so this gives them an opportunity to green up a little space.
Discussion, counsel. Counselor?
Do we know if there's any issues with zoning or planning that this individual have to address in order to do what he wants to do with it?
I don't believe there should be any issues, because he's really going to be returning some of it to green space, which is normally viewed as beneficial.
And I know that this, we acquired this in conjunction with a piece of property across the street that is a building that does have onsite parking. And I know that there have been some interested parties. Nothing has materialized. When we've discussed this property with those parties, has there been any interest in that lot across the street as well?
There had been at one point in time, but I know that some of the more recent discussions with the uses that were being envisioned, most of the more recent interest in that property thought that they could utilize the onsite parking adequately.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel, please.
Is the individual up to date with all his payments with the decision?
Yes, that's normally mandatory for us to get into these agreements.
Thank you. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Castro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Appointment Resolution Number 27 of 2022, confirming appointment to the Assessment Appointments Oral, to the Assessment Board of Review. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Castro, second by Counselor Genetino.
Appointment Resolution 27 of 2022, whereas New York State law requires that the City of Auburn maintain an assessment review board by which members are appointed by the mayor with confirmation by the council. Whereas, there currently exist vacancies on the board. It is the recommendation of the mayor that the following persons, whom are residents of the City of Auburn, shall be appointed as members of the board for a term of five years, namely Denise Pellegrino, Marcus Bab, and Gary Christopher Porton. And whereas, these members residing in Auburn, New York, shall serve the Board of Assessment Review for a term of five years, commencing immediately and lasting through March 3rd, 2027. Whereas, it is necessary, the Auburn City Council does approve the appointment of Denise Pellegrino, Marcus Bab, and Gary Christopher Porton for a term of five years to the Board of Assessment Review. Now therefore, be it resolved, that the Auburn City Council does hereby appoint Denise Pellegrino, Marcus Bab, and Gary Christopher Porton to be members of the Board of Assessment Review, each for a term of five years, commencing immediately and lasting through March 3rd, 2027.
Counselors, any discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genetino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Wacaster.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Aye.
Carry.
Appointment Resolution Number 28 of 2022, endorsing appointment for members of the Q County Water and Sewer Authority. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Kent, second by Counselor Cuddy.
Appointment Resolution 28 of 2022, whereas the Q County Water and Sewer Authority is a governmental agency consisting of a public benefit corporation, and its purpose is to serve the people of the county. The authority ensures the health and welfare of the county by providing and protecting the water and wastewater services to the county district. And whereas, the Q County Water and Sewer Authority is governed by a nine-member board of directors, and there are currently vacancies on the board. Whereas, the Auburn City Council is desirous of endorsing appointment of Mayor Michael D. Quill as a director of the Board of the Q County Water and Sewer Authority. D. Quill as a Director of the Board of the Kew County Water and Sewer Authority. Now therefore, be it resolved, the Auburn City Council does hereby endorse the appointment of Mayor Michael D. Quill to the Kew County Water and Sewer Authority Board of Directors.
Discussion? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Castro.
Yes.
Mayor Quill.
Present.
Carry.
No table item that I'm aware of? No presentation? Other business from the council? Counselors? Very well. Second public to be heard? Is there anyone desiring to be heard? Very well. Do we have requests for executive session?
Mayor, hate to spoil our quick night so far, but staff has two items related to the sale or lease of real property, and one item related to the employment of a particular individual.
Very well. Entertain a motion for executive session. Counselor Castro, second by Counselor Kent.
That was a first. I was like, whoa! Like, usually.
Clerk, if you call the roll for executive session.
Executive session for 5:34 PM. Counselor Kent.
Yes.
Counselor Genatino.
Aye.
Counselor Cuddy.
Yes.
Counselor Castro.
Yes.
And Mayor Quill.
Aye. We recess for executive session.